September 22nd, September 25th, NEAS visit. September 24th, school committee business meeting, 7:00 PM, North Kingstown High School auditorium. And also in your packets, there is a list of open houses throughout the month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to presentations, recognitions. So that brings us to you, Dr. Ojai.
Okay. I'm going to have Dr. Kenworthy come on up and talk to us a little bit about the upcoming NEAS visit, which is taking place this month. Before he does, I would like to acknowledge, I had a discussion with John Keough. John Keough is our visiting NEAS chair, and Tom will talk a little bit about his discussions with him as well. And Tom wanted me to point out that, you know, he has mentioned on a number of occasions with me and with Tom, that in John's 17 years as working for NEAS, he has never seen a school so organized and prepared for their visit. And he owes that to the faculty of North Kingstown High School, and particularly to Barbara Morse and Amy Messerlian, who are the chairs of the, of this effort. As you know, they're faculty people who chair a NEAS visit, and it is an enormous task. It takes years, and they deserve a lot of our gratitude for leading the school through that process. So, without any further ado, I'm going to leave it to Dr. Kenworthy to talk to us a little bit about what to expect during this visit.
Thank you, Dr. Ojai. Good evening, everyone. So, you know, I've come over the last couple of years, I've come several times to give updates throughout our process leading up to our NEAS accreditation visit, which is ready to kick off here in a couple of weeks. So this is essentially going to be my last pre-visit update. But just to kind of recap for everyone and for the public, you know, where we are in the process, and then when the visit begins, you know, all of the different meetings and happenings that'll be going on once the visit starts, so I can just clarify anything there. We'll, you know, start pretty much from this point on now, a couple of weeks out, we'll make sure that everything is heavily advertised, you know, in the community as much as we can, in the press and through, you know, our communication vehicles, our listserv, and, you know, automated phone calls and everything. But, you know, as you may recall, we've been engaged in a self-study process for the past 18 months is, you know, the official NEAS timeframe, you know, but that stretches over three semesters, so it's really two school years leading up to this point that the faculty's been engaged in the self-study process, that NEAS does want to be a faculty-driven process. So as Dr. Ojai mentioned, you know, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to our faculty and staff here at the high school, and in particular, Dr. Morse and Mrs. Messerlian, who have joined me at various times but couldn't be here this evening. So they've really kept everybody organized and on task, and our chair did point out, you know, to myself several times, I know he met Dr. Ojai, how impressed he was, and, you know, he's no rookie at this, he's, you know, he's done several of these. So, again, we're ready, kind of with everything that we need to at this point. So I did finally was able to meet with the chair of our visit. That's kind of a piece that we need to have in place before we can verify any of the information for the visit. And we are, you know, the week that we actually happened to be having the visit, the week of September 22nd, just the way it falls, is the first visit week of the NEAS calendar, so to speak. As you can imagine, they're getting out in all various high schools throughout the New England area, throughout the school year, when schools are having visits. But, you know, this is the first week that visits kickoff. So, you know, just kind of being the first week and coming off of the summer, had to wait for everybody's schedules to settle a little bit. All of the team members that will be coming out as part of this process, again, I think it's just an important thing to point out to everyone in the public, you know, these are practitioners right up through, you know, any of the team members, including our team chair. They're all either teachers, principals, assistant principals, central office administrators who work in various high schools across the New England region. So that's one of the things that makes the NEAS process so great, is that you're getting that feedback, you know, from people who are on the ground level in the field. So we did meet with our chair last week, we were able to secure kind of his, you know, final kind of blessing, so to speak, on when he wanted all of the various meetings set up. So, you know, I can confirm the community kickoff celebration will happen here, right in the auditorium at 1:00 PM. You know, that's kind of a public celebration. We have about, you know, they give us a max of an hour. I don't know if we'll take necessarily the whole time, but, you know, we're planning somewhere between 45 minutes and an hour. You know, it's your basic presentation of, hey, this is our community, this is our school, the type of information, you know, they do give us a little bit of structure, that's the type of information that they want to see in that presentation. So that'll be roughly in that 1 to 2 timeframe. That'll be the first time that the team sets foot in the school as well, so the team is due to arrive at the hotel meeting location that we've had to secure for them, but they usually arrive about 10:00 that morning. They'll kind of meet each other for the first time, go through some orientation activities with the chair, and then they come here for that 1 o'clock kickoff. So, pretty much after that, meetings start right away. As you all may have seen already, I did email school committee members about the school committee meetings, so they do want to have that immediately after that community presentation, so somewhere in the 2, 2:15 timeframe. Several other meetings will take place throughout the afternoon on Sunday, including another big one is our parent meeting, which we're trying to drum up as much information about. And then the meetings will finish up about 4:00, and from 4:00 to 5:00, we have reserved, it's more of a social gathering. So again, anyone in the public who wants to come or wants to stick around from the 1:00 presentation time is invited to come. We'll be in the cafeteria for that portion. But again, that's considered kind of the one kind of social gathering part of the visit, so a little more informal, and just a chance for anybody to engage the team members and ask some questions, that kind of thing. So, you know, the two key times there for the public would be that 1 to 2 timeframe we're in here for the kickoff presentation, and then the 4 to 5 timeframe, once all the meetings finish that afternoon, we'll be in the cafeteria. So then the team is here from Monday through Wednesday of that week, and they're doing various activities such as shadowing students, meeting with, you know, teachers, central office administrators, other district employees, that kind of thing. And the bulk of that will occur on the Monday and Tuesday of the visit. By Wednesday of the visit, you know, the usual format, and, you know, many of us in preparation for this visit, encouraged by NEAS, have been out on visits ourselves, so we, you know, we know firsthand the structure. By Wednesday, most of the time, they've gathered all the information that they need to, and, you know, they're settling in, kind of finalizing their reports, so to speak. Later on that afternoon on Wednesday, they'll just have a brief session with the faculty and myself, you know, here again, and, you know, and just kind of give us some parting words. We'll see an actual report, you know, the chair sends the report to the NEAS office, it kind of goes through all the processes it needs to there. And then based on when our visit is scheduled, we're due to receive the actual report somewhere around the January timeframe. And it's, you know, it's that final NEAS report that we're waiting for, that's the, you know, that's the culminating piece, that's their feedback. Obviously, our accreditation status is big there, you know, any school that goes into this, you want to come out of it with full accreditation. But if there's any other information they need to point out to us, they'll do so in that report. So prior to that, they're working off of this faculty self-study that we've been engaged in developing over the past 18 months. And, you know, a lot of what I've been pointing out is I've been talking to various members of the public and the press, is it's that report that they're going, you know, a team member's going to come here, and, you know, again, from experience, we can just tell you, the chair is going to instruct the team to not read anything other than the self-study, you know, website, maybe, look at information like that. But the key is, they're not working off the last report in 2003. You know, once you get to this point that we are in the process, they're focused on kind of the here and now, so to speak. So it's going to be that self-study document that they'll work off of, that our faculty has put, you know, so much time and effort into for the last two years. And then again, they're, you know, they're going to develop their own conclusions, so to speak, but that'll be their starting point, and then we'll get their final report a few months after the visit. So, I don't know if there's any other questions I can answer, confirm any meeting times, anything?
Dr. Kenworthy, is there anything that we should particularly look at in the report that, you know, you think, oh, this is important for us to take note of? I mean, I know the entire report is important, but I didn't know if there was something that you specifically would think that we should focus in on as we're looking at it?
No. Again, I think, like you said, Mrs. Page, it's all important at this point. You know, the seven areas the report has broken down into, those are the seven NEAS standards. A lot of this is a standardized process, so those are the seven, those are also the seven NEAS standards. There's a lot of, you know, background information behind all of those standards. So, again, what our faculty had to do over the last two years is kind of, okay, here's the NEAS standard, here's kind of how that standard applies at North Kingstown High School, and also support those conclusions with evidence. So, you know, again, like you said, it's all important. I don't think from your perspective as school committee members, you know, if there's any one area you need to particularly focus on. You know, and also, I think when they meet with you, they're not going to necessarily, for your meeting, you know, be expecting you to have memorized anything from the report. It'll be more the general process of, you know, how the school committee functions in North Kingstown, that kind of thing.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just going to make one point. I did see already, an email went out to anyone who's on Patch, and they already had a good headline.
Yeah.
With the date of the meeting right in the headline, so that was good for the whole community.
Yeah. So they were, you know, I've talked to pretty much all of the local papers at this point. I need to finalize a few of the interviews, but, you know, we should see some, you know, some good press there, but the Patch was the first to get the story out there, so we appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. We'll see everybody on the 22nd. Thank you.
I mean, I forget, did you have that on your calendar of events? Yes. Thank you. All right. I don't know if there's any other, you know, I've neglected to ask any of the principals if there was anything that we wanted, they wanted us to recognize, or in terms of students that we've had here. I know we've only had a couple of our sports teams play, and most of them have been more of the injury fund games. I know, like, soccer had their first game, both girls and boys, but I don't know if there's anything else, if anybody wants to bring up a special recognition or anything that you've heard around the district? Okay. All right. That brings us to citizens' comments. No one signed up. All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak up here in citizens' comments? All right. So, that brings us to superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. You know, I just want to make one note of recognition to Forest Park Elementary School and Principal Wendy Amelot. You know, this past week, they had the death of a student, Elise Jackson, a fifth grade student, who passed away after a long fight, were waiting to have a lung transplant. And what struck me about going to that wake and going to that funeral was how much that family talked about Forest Park being their family. And it was very impressive to me, a very profound impact on me, to see the outpouring of support from that community, from the teaching staff, from the principal, who single-handedly called all the parents of the fifth grade to tell them herself, and coordinating an effort where the parents would be the ones to talk to their kids about this. That's a lot of extra work on her behalf, and she was obviously, did a great job in her leadership with that effort, and I want to recognize that. And like I said, it was very impressive to me to see just how much our elementary schools are part of people's families, and how much they mean to people, and so I just wanted to recognize that with my report this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ojai. I must admit, I was impressed with the attachment that went around, just how that talked about, how to talk to children of a young age. You know, hopefully, we won't need to have anything like that again, but it is something that we should make sure that we keep, in case there is a need. All right. That brings us to executive session items. I need a motion to seal the executive session minutes from September 10th, 2013?
So moved.
Second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye abstain.
Two abstentions here. And, Lorraine, there was no votes to disclose from the executive session, correct?
Okay.
I need approval for the motion, or memorandum of agreement, so I'm looking for a motion for that. Second.
Comments, please?
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
Could you refresh my memory on what that memorandum of agreement is for?
It was for memorandum of agreement that was discussed this evening in executive session.
Is that a new one?
Yes.
Okay. How did, just for the heck of it, did that have any financial impact on us?
Yes. Yes, but it is what we've discussed before. So it did not have anything new from what has been discussed before in executive session.
That should not be public information?
The memorandum of agreement is for an employee.
I understand, but when we're, you know, we're using our assets, how do we, how does a taxpayer, you know, know, you know, for liabilities and actions and things like that?
It goes into the budget under settlements, so it is a sort of thing of, we do keep track of it. It would be the sort of thing of report out, but we make sure that it is not tied to any particular person or issue.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That brings us to the consent agenda. I do have one change for item F4. In F4F, Nicole Brickerhoff is at Stony Lane, not Hamilton. So that is a change to what is written in your packet. Are there any items to exempt?
Yes.
Mr. Mudge, would you like to exempt?
Excuse me. A D. E.
Very high pitched. Do you have anything else, Mr. Mudge?
Nope.
Anybody else have anything else that they would like to exempt?
Yes.
Mrs. Avanzado.
F, it's 6F. 6F3, just 6F3, not the rest.
Madam Chair, can we exempt the whole item because it's all one item?
Do you just want to exempt F?
Oh, we can. Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So F6. We can do it that way.
Oh, you can do F6? Okay. Yeah, we'll do F6. Anything else?
No, F, actually, it's F3.
F3?
Yes, F3, please.
Oh, okay. So it's F3, not F6. Okay, got it. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Hey, many, many. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Mr. Mudge, that brings us to D1.
Yes. I would like to understand, I read this thing, is what is an activity fund? As I see, and I wish, and I thought we had this agreement some other time, that when we approve the budget, and whatever the financial numbers were indications, they appear on the budget, so we know, or the document contains what the, you know, the obligation is. I think Mr. Welch was a supporter of that as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Not activity funds, perhaps enterprise fund, but this is different. This is a student activity fund in which fundraisers are held at schools, dances and events at the school, and it's really actually probably more properly called a principal account, if you will. But these are absolutely not in part of our budget. The enterprise funds, yes, but not the student activity funds, and that's what these funds are from.
Well, see, I looked at the, I looked at, excuse my thing, but I think everyone's seen this before because I submitted it. It's the regulations, the guide, you know, all the YOCA documents. And in there, student activity funds can only be approved by the, basically, the students themselves. So I think we have a definition problem on what a student activity fund is and so forth. Also, I would note in here that I think we have an absence of policy, because in this documentation, which I've said to everyone before on activity funds, it calls out for the school committees to establish policies for handling revenues from boosters clubs, so forth and so on. I don't believe we've done that.
We don't get funds from the booster club unless they give us a particular item that they buy, and then we have to go through the same approval thing, but the boosters just don't give the schools money. They usually get some sort of particular item, or they may give, they give out scholarships to the students, so that's not to us, but it's a sort of thing of, they just aren't giving money to the schools. I mean, so your, also, your school activity funds, you need to think of them as, those are the picture funds. So whenever life touch comes into the elementary school or middle school and they take pictures, they give a certain percentage of the sales go back to that particular school, so that if the principal wants to then use the money. This is before us today because this amount is over $5,000. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to be supporting this agenda item, and it's not that I don't support the items requested to be purchased, I don't support the process, the lack of process that we're using. For those of you who are here, you may recall, several years ago, the school committee requested an audit, independent audit be conducted on the student activities funds. And as a result of the findings of that audit, two school department administrators were terminated. So I, we had gotten some controls in place after that audit was conducted, and I had watched, year after year, nobody's fault, I'm not blaming anybody in particular, year after year, I have watched the controls on that and the process on that loosen back up to what it used to be. So I'm not going to support any expenditures from that until we get our hands around this because the administrators that are sitting here now were not sitting here back then at that point, and they, to their defense, they may not be aware of some of the ongoings back then, but I was sitting here, and I can see the same habits or the same lack of oversight slowly but surely slipping right back to where we were four or five years ago on this matter. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Cerisi, I do have a pretty large document that was prepared by our controller that our student activity fund guidelines that we have been working with the principals on, so I can certainly share that. It's pretty comprehensive, and it's funny that you should even bring that up, because I had one of the principals call me today and say, you know, I'll do whatever you need me to do, but some of these things are not actually realistic. So there, we have worked with the principals very closely on some guidelines, because some people don't understand that, you know, although those funds are a fundraiser and maybe not part of town taxes or part of our general fund, we still, I have explained to many principals and some staff people as well, that we do need to be good stewards of that money as well. So we do need to follow the same purchasing rules and guidelines that we follow with what are our general funds.
We have, we've had this discussion before, the, and the principals are not the be-all, end-all to make a decision on how those funds are going to be expended, that the students and the parents raise.
We do have procedure, though, following this, too. This is something we've talked about within the policy committee before. It was a sort of thing of, we, that was why we had the procedural manual that came about. So it was a sort of thing of, it didn't come to the school committee level because it was more of a procedural manner, manual. Yes, Mrs. Avanzado, and then Mr. Jones and Mr. Mudge.
My concern is twofold, really, and related to what Mrs. Cerisi just said. Mary, if you can, like, look at those, I remember how complicated the regulations were about expenditures of money out of student activities funds, and how on the ground level at some of these schools, at the elementary school, it was extremely difficult, confusing, or whatever, to implement. We might want to take a look at those and make sure, streamline in any way we can, or if there's something that's impractical in there, we could, we could look at that again. But that's really, my concern about this agenda item is that we are talking about purchasing, it looks like cameras for the classroom, which is great, but I don't know why it would be coming out of student activity funds. To me, I would think it would come out of the technology portion of the budget or something like that. Why would the students be paying for stuff that, it seems that, you know, I don't know, there may be a reason, I have no idea, but that's the part of it that I don't understand.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mrs. Page. I guess I would echo to some degree what Mr. Mudge and Mr. Cerisi have said, and I guess my feeling, one, is that we can say it comes from student pictures, but, I mean, let's be honest, the vendors built in the fact of giving a commission back into their pricing structure, and so it's really coming out of the students and really the parents' funds that are doing this. And I would agree, I think this highlights, again, that, you know, we should probably move to some kind of technology capital fund, where something like this could first compete for resourcing from general funds, and then defer back, because this is an alternate source if it doesn't make a high enough priority. And I would be concerned, too, because, you know, we're talking about some things that come over $5,000, but honestly, a lot of the student activity funds have lower thresholds, and as Mr. Cerisi pointed out, you know, the ability to have $500,000 purchases here and there, you know, add up, but never, but never come to the level that get that kind of, perhaps, transparency that I think might be needed. And I think it might be good to take a pause with some new members of the committee and take a look at what the process is and have a review of this before going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mudge?
Yes. I think we need a policy that defines these things, and here again, I've got the government's policy, got it in your corner, I'd like you to summarize what, be what the summary says. There are two classifications of activity funds, district and student. It's recommended that the district activity funds be classified as special revenue funds, and student activity funds as agency fiduciary funds. Agency fiduciary funds. Now, these are broken down also into some categories, and they have some examples here of what goes into a student activity fund. For example, art club, student activity. Cheerleading club, chorus, class counselor activity funds, only under the control, okay, of a superintendent and a designated person. In addition to that, okay, they have the complete authority of spending that money on what they want, period. Period. Now you have the district activity funds, which involves items that sometimes are supported also by athletics, so they have athletics fund in here, book fair, music concerts, special field trips. You have activity funds to do those type of things. And those resources, okay, that generate money from, the money is generated from them, okay, are treated as a district revenue, and the school committee has total cognizance of that money and directs where that money would be spent.
All right. So it's what you're sounding like, Mr. Mudge, is this, this is an issue for the policy committee, so?
Well, we sent it to the policy committee a couple of times, and nothing ever came back, so I would think that maybe we should send it to the budget committee.
But you're having a new request, so if you'd like to send it over?
The budget committee. I'd like to make a motion to send this thing to the budget committee to look at in terms of, you know, it's a, basically, it's a financial matter and how we do business, and I think it would be best, the recommendation coming from the budget committee.
That would be fine. You may send it to the budget committee.
I would second that motion.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to send this to the budget committee. I also saw Mr. Biscardin's hand, and now I see Mrs. Avanzado and Cheryl Clarkin's hands, Mrs. Clarkin. So, Mr. Biscardin.
I was just going to, before Mr. Mudge made his motion, I was going to suggest that we just table table it, so we could just kind of meet this thing out, and figure out what's what, make sure we're doing the right thing at the right time. There's some questions I have to, I have as well, but they're really moot until we get, until we get the proper, to make sure we're doing this through the proper channels before my questions, until we do that, my questions are moot, really.
This is, I have no problem with tabling the item. I am taking down notes as to what the committee wants to see, and so I want to make sure that people do state as to what the committee wants to see before this comes back on the agenda. Mrs. Alvinzado.
I can tell you that I would want to know why we would use student activity funds for an item like cameras for students. That's what I don't, that's the part of it that I don't understand, and maybe a reason for that. I do want to acknowledge that this is on our agenda. There has been a lot more transparency in expenditures, and it is being brought before this committee by the administration. I just don't understand the funding. That's the part, if the kids may need this equipment, and so we need to do, we need to get it, but the question is, from where and in compliance with what we need to be in compliance with?
Mrs. Clarkin.
So I, I understand where everyone's coming from and what the, you know, the comments have been. My first reaction was, when I saw this in the agenda, why isn't it coming from technology funds and student activity? But I inquired about that to get some clarification as to why that, you know, was going on. I, you know, I'm new to this, so I don't know the history behind what's happened with student activity funds before, but, you know, when a principal's asking for technology that's going to assist the kids that he needs, I think we have to be proactive. So we have backup material. I can see maybe tabling this for, you know, for a couple of weeks till the next meeting, but this is something that the kids need. So I don't want this to just linger and not be approved because, you know, we have to get a budget committee meeting or a policy in place.
It has to be done quickly.
Right, it has to be done quickly. So my first question would be, is it possible to, I mean, we're talking like, I don't have the number in front of me, this, like, what, $7,500?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay, less than $10,000. Do we have that money in our technology budget at all to purchase this equipment?
Not in the general fund budget for FY14, if you want to use general, if you want to use fund balance, you could do that. These are pretty big items, and I will tell you that one thing that IT is working on as part of our CIP package is, are some items like this for more enhanced technology, not just our infrastructure, but as well as some of these issues, classroom issues, but I think you guys were all at the same budget meetings that I were at, and we were cut, you know, we had to make cuts, so there weren't a whole lot, and I'm not, that's no criticism toward anybody, it's a fact, we had to make cuts so that there were, there was not extra money for extra things. So some people might think this should have been in there, it was, it wasn't, but we did make an awful lot of cuts at the end, so...
Well, you know, my concern is that this is equipment, I mean, we've approved laptop carts, we've approved all kinds of technology. This is technology a principal's requesting for the benefit of the students, okay, at a commended school. So I think that we need maybe some leniency here, and, you know, we have backup, maybe we follow up and create a policy after this, but I would hate to have us hold up something because it's going to take months to have all of these different, various meetings occur, and the equipment's not going to get to the kids. My two cents.
Mr. Mudge, then, Mr. Cerisi, and Mr. Buscarden.
You know, I'm kind of sympathetic to that, that application, but, and I would suggest that we take it out of whatever fund we have to, and if we ultimately approve this, which I would hope it could prove somehow, then we would, you know, divert it back, in other words, loan it to the school, okay? But, but as I think of this, I'm saying, there's another junior high school, there are other schools.
They're not requesting this.
Well, I know it, so my point being is, if this is so important, how can we do one thing for one school and not another?
Who said we won't?
So that's just my concern, okay? So we gotta be careful with that, then.
Mr. Cerisi. I see your hand, Mr. Jones.
I don't want to digress too far off the agenda topic here, but just, not that we already haven't, but, kind of going along with what Mr. Mudge was just saying, you know, and I've had this conversation with the superintendent previously, I get a little concerned when we start approving technology purchases for different schools and even district-wide at times. And I really don't see a long-term, district-wide strategic plan as far as how we are going to purchase and implement technology. I feel like we're doing a lot of scattered things, every school's doing their own little different things. Who wants to buy laptop carts? Who wants cameras? Who wants iPads? And I feel like we got elementary schools where there's, we don't have parity, one school has something, another school doesn't. I really think, and I've said this before, I really think we need to look at a district-wide strategic plan, and I know we just talked about the strategic plan a couple of weeks ago, but district-wide strategic plan as far as what direction we are going to go as a school district, not as individual schools, what technology, what our purchases, and make sure that the expenditures that we're approving on these agendas coincide with that strategic plan. Because I've been doing this for almost eight years now. I've sat here and I've approved cameras and laptops and this and that, come to find out a year later, they're all sitting in a closet, not being used, because they're outdated. And I, and I have students telling me this, and I've seen it for myself, and I'm sure our student representative can speak to that as well. So, again, it's like, this principal wants this, this principal wants that, and then next year it's outdated, and this middle school doesn't have it. We have two middle schools that hold totally separate types of graduation ceremonies. Again, I'm not going to digress on this, so, and I've talked to the superintendent about that as well.
Yes, and I believe on that piece, we have voted as a school committee to move forward, to have some sort of a district-wide computer survey and to be looking at where we're going. So, you know, good idea, and I think, you know, we've all agreed with that and that we're following through with that. Mr. Buscarden.
Excuse me. The more, you know, the more we talk about this, this has been a very, very good discussion about this, I think, the more we talk, the more questions arise, or, you know, come up. So I understand, Ms. Clark, I understand your concern about kids at Wickford Middle, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if North Kingston School District is much different than any other school district, but we have quite a diverse constituency here, and there's a clear haves and have-nots. And as years go by, that disparity becomes even larger and more obvious. And I would hate for us to take advantage of the financial wherewithal of one school and the other school gets, suffers because they don't have the same advantages with their, with their, with the people that make up that school district's population as one, as another does. So, in other words, now Wickford Middle School, let's face it, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the part of town that parents have a little bit more expendable income than Davisville Middle. And it's a shame that Mr. Cerisi says that we don't have a comprehensive plan that distributes technology in some sort of equitable fashion, because, like you said, there's graduations ceremonies that differ, so how many other differences are there? I think this could just exacerbate the situation. We really need to take a step back and look at where this money is, my biggest question is, did the parents approve this? They say, yes, this is what we want this money to go to? I don't know, but I suspect not. You know, I don't know that for a fact, but I suspect no. I suspect that to get that kind of approval would have been, taken quite frankly, too long for this to happen. We just need to check ourselves and make sure we're doing the right thing with the money that we have, so we don't get caught in a situation that we were caught in years ago that you mentioned, Mr. Cerisi. So I think this needs to be tabled, and we really need to look at this and make sure we're doing the right thing and not jumping the gun.
I saw Mr. Jones' hand, and I see Mrs. Clarkin's hand, but I'm gonna have the superintendent, he had his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of points. I agree with Mrs. Cerisi on the fact that we need a technology plan. In fact, I proposed one to you before the end of the last school year, and you have approved us going forward with that, and that is happening. It's going to take a little while before it all gets in place, but it is happening, and for exactly the reasons that Mrs. Cerisi pointed out, that we do have taken an approach over the years, not anyone's fault, but various schools have a little bit more means, whether it's PTO money, or in this case, student activity money, those things are a little bit different. In this, this is a case where some of this money has been sitting in that pot for quite a while. So the actual students who may have been part of the fundraisers back in the day are not even at Wickford Middle School anymore. I, while I think it is a good decision on Mr. Merkel's part to look after the needs of his school, he needs these things, they're part of the students' learning, I don't see anything wrong with using this money for that, but I understand the concerns of the committee, and we'll look at it and we'll find a more appropriate way, if we can, to purchase that equipment. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Jones and then Mrs. Clarkin.
Thank you. I'll be brief, because I think previous speakers brought up the point I was going to make in the interim, that being that this committee did fund a technology survey, and so hopefully these kinds of things are going to be part of that. But again, I would, and I have a child at this school, so I'm sensitive to that, and I appreciate Mr. Merkel because, you know, there's a possibility with an activity fund of buying these in small increments, and then we would never get to have this transparency and discussion we're having now. So, so I appreciate Mr. Merkel for bringing it up in this way. I guess I would, though, I would agree with Mr. Buscarden is that, you know, when something like this sort of raises a lot of things, it's maybe appropriate just to pause a minute and get a collective sense of what's right.
Mrs. Clarkin.
So I guess I was going to reiterate along the lines of Mr. Jones, I mean, we already approved a technology strategic plan, so we're already going down the right path to correct whatever wrongs have been done in the past. We've also fixed some of the inequities between the schools, okay? We know that Hamilton had a lot of smart boards because they had PTO fundraisers, because they do have socioeconomic differences, as well as Wickford Middle School and some of the other schools. But what we did is we approved to have smart boards for all the other schools that didn't have them, okay? So we're working towards equities within our school system, okay? We haven't been approached by Davisville or the principal for this kind of request. So I'm thinking that if this request comes through, it's probably something that's necessary for the kids. I understand there's a lot of issues that have arisen here tonight, and I, and I get that we could table this, but my concern is that I don't want something that's needed for the kids to wait months because of committees and policies and everything else.
Mrs. Alvinzado and then Mr. Mudge.
Okay, just briefly, I, I agree with what Cheryl just said, with both points, actually. I think this, Phil has paid attention to equity in these schools, and we've worked on that. I think he's very sensitive to that, as are we all, and have corrected some of those things. Secondly, I wouldn't like to see this get buried until after we look at our entire process and our entire student activity account process and all of that, so perhaps we could ask the administration what their proposal would be and come back to us with, is it feasible to use fund balance or another funding source? Or, you know, what happens to the funds that are sitting there if there are no current students in the school that helped fundraise those funds? I've read some articles about this issue when we were going through all of this, trying to figure out what to do with student activity funds. And it becomes difficult if the students are all gone and the money's there, there's really no one to say how to spend it, it's just sitting there in a pot. So there's issues connected to this, I know. Anyway, I would ask that, yeah, we don't waste much time getting back to it, because it sounds like it is in need of the students, that's all.
All right, so I want to make sure I understand this. So for next time, we have this on the agenda. While people want a process change, we don't need a process change to pass this. People want to find out if there's any place else so we can fund this in the agenda, although Mary's just told us there is no other place to fund this in the agenda. We have, want to find out why it's coming out from here as opposed to some other item on the agenda, even though Mary has told us there's no other place to come from the agenda. So I'm just making sure that when we pass this...
I don't think that's what Mary said, Kim. Mary said fund balance, potentially.
Okay, so is that what the committee wants the superintendent to look at? I just, I'm trying to make sure I understand that when we put this on for next time, do you want to see a rationale for coming out of fund balance versus out of the principal's slash student activities account? And what else does the committee want to see when we put this back on the agenda?
You can pass it right now with fund balance funds. It's only 10 grand.
It's too bad that this has caught up in this issue, but this is a fundamental issue, not just with these particular funds. You're talking about the photography department, you're talking, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, you're talking about a lot of other revenues here. So this is a policy, okay, that affects a great deal of things. For example, the boosters club, again, the money that comes into the school.
The boosters club is separate from the school.
No, it's not separate, excuse me.
Yes, they are. They're a separate corporation.
Excuse me, it is not separate from the policy, and the policy asks you to determine those things as well, whether it's PTOs, I can read it to you.
The PTOs are incorporated, so again, they are separate, they decide how to spend their own money.
May I, yes, you're absolutely right. But they spend the money, the school committee's got to approve the use of the money, okay? So we have a regulation issue here.
We're either going to accept it or we're not going to accept it, just like if the Rotary would give us money, or the Coral Group would give us money, and they have given us stuff, I mean, it's merely a question of if we accept it or not. So this, in this case, is a school account, this is different. So I don't have any issue with having a policy around it, I think that's a good idea, and I'm agreeing with you. My question is, what exactly does the school committee want to see for next time when this is on the agenda? And that's just what I'm trying to make sure that I understand, so that we don't have this on the agenda again, and school committee's members say, we didn't get the information that we needed, that's all. Mr. Cerisi.
Motion to end the debate and call a question, please.
Motion on the floor. Oh, oh, he made a motion to, this is a motion on the floor, to send this to the budget subcommittee. Right. But would that be, that was just the policy, that was not this specific purchase item, am I correct?
Mr. Mudge's motion to send the item, I believe, to the budget subcommittee meeting?
Thank God.
Thank you, Phil.
I thought a jet was taking off.
Madam Chair, I'll offer an amendment to the motion to table this agenda item and coincide, send it to the budget subcommittee to review.
Would you just have the policy go to the budget subcommittee?
You know, we can table this agenda item for this meeting and have it on our next agenda, and if the budget subcommittee would like to take up this matter from a budgetary perspective, that's certainly well within the realm of their charge, their subcommittee charge. So I'm going to ask that we table this until our next meeting.
Second.
Wait, there's a motion on the table.
Mr. Cerisi, you need, everybody who made the motion, the past motion to send to the budget meeting needs to withdraw the motion and the second, and then, Mr. Cerisi, you can make your motion.
I'll withdraw that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so now, Mr. Cerisi has made a motion to table this item, and it's had been a second. Is there any further discussion?
What is the motion exactly?
Table the item for the next agenda.
Well, after this motion is voted on, we're going to make a motion to fund it right now out of fund balance. Mary just said we could.
That's fine.
Okay? So you can draw your motion and let us make our motion, then.
Okay.
And then we can discuss the policy issues later. And if it's found that the money comes from student activities, we can be reimbursed.
Can we, can we... Can we, can we? I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can do that, but let's vote on the table or not, but I don't think that you can move money around like that. I, yeah, so.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to table the item. Mr. Jones.
Mary, do you know what the lead time on this stuff is? I mean, is it ready for delivery, or is there, because, I mean, that's somewhat germane to this discussion.
I don't know, but I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a real long lead time. I mean, this stuff looks like it's, it's stuff that we've definitely ordered before. I don't think so.
Mr. Cerisi.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I will make a new motion to approve this agenda item using fund balance funding.
Second.
Who seconded your motion, Mr. Cerisi? They're going to withdraw.
It's the Biscarton.
Okay. What if I don't?
Then, then.
I'm kidding, I'm withdrawing, I'm joking, withdrawing.
Okay, I second your, your second motion.
I third.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the item. Now, I will say this, now you're setting up the situation where you are paying at a fund balance, why not for one middle school, but not for another middle school?
That's fine, and that's something we really need to take up at our next meeting. That's why I've asked that we put this on our next agenda.
All right.
Let's get this equipment for this school, for the students, and as far as policy and funding, we can address that at our next meeting. That's certainly my main concern here. As I said, I don't object to-
Mr. Mudge and Mr. Biscarton.
You want to comment on that motion?
Yes.
Listen, I, I don't believe that we can't wait two weeks and come back with something, okay, instead of just jumping into this, because once we have, we've committed ourselves to here, and also for, as far as I'm concerned, Davisville, at least Davisville Elementary and possibly the high school. I assume the principles are the same that, you know, Principal Merkel wants, is applicable to the students at Davisville Middle School. So it's, what's going to, what's going to happen if we wait two weeks on this thing?
Mr. Biscarton.
I have a math question for you, Mrs. King. I see, I'm looking at the two quotes, and they don't add up to $9,300. I'm looking at one, it says 52, 43, and another one, it says 70, is it 75, 60? And I don't see, I don't see a third that says 93, and, you know, it's been a while, but 75 and 53 are more than 93.
I'm sorry, I cannot answer that question. I did not submit the item.
So now we have, now we have another question. What are we approving? Because we don't, if that's truly the number, we're not looking at it.
Mr. Cerisi.
I've, I've about had it with this agenda item, and Mr. Mudge is right. I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I didn't second it.
I don't believe it even received the second.
Yeah, yeah.
It did.
Motion to table till our next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, we have, there's, again, here's another que, just, like I said earlier, the more we discuss, the more questions arise. Yet, here's another, that, you know, the agenda says $9,300, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, none of the quotes attached match that number.
We can go back and ask Mr. Merkel, that'll give us two weeks.
I don't know if it's Mr. Merkel, maybe Mr. Booth, I saw his number, his name-
Come back within two weeks.
All right, so we have a motion to, to basically table this item and bring it back on the agenda. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mudge, that brings us to approval of the transportation memorandum of agreement.
Yes, I was looking at that, and what has precipitated this transportation agreement? And has it been worked out with the union? Have they, the union staff, are they on board with this thing?
Mr. Mudge, this actually came from a specific question that I had from Mr. Mumford, who wanted in writing specifically that if he were to go and purchase a new bus, as had been approved by the school committee, that he would, after the 2016 point, which is when the Bus Contractors Association contract expires, if there was still another contract with that group, would he be guaranteed to have his extension? When I spoke to Ms. Page and Mr. Cerisi about it, they thought that it might be a good idea to have this MOA that solidifies the school committee's stance on these issues, because your last votes regarding the Bus Contractors Association has ended at 2016. I did send this off to Mr. Peck, who is in charge of the association, last week, Wednesday or Thursday. I have not heard from him, but quite frankly, if that's how the school committee has voted in the past, this kind of affirms that, so that they also understand going forward how the school committee stands.
Well, but if, does this affect the contract as it stands today? Is this a contract changed with their contract?
No.
This doesn't affect the bus driver's contract?
No.
No, it affirms the last, you had two five-year extension requests, that you only went until 2016, which is the end of the current contract. You had a request for a new seven-year contract for a bus, and you agreed to that only until 2016. So all this does is affirms that that's how the school committee has voted, seemingly that is how you will continue to vote going forward, should there be any other extension requests or new bus purchases. So that contract ends on 2016 at this time, no matter what.
I guess my point is, is this a violation of the current contract, though?
No, no.
Has the legal staff commented on that, please?
Mr. Mudge, all this does is assure the three contractors who requested long-term contracts, who you only gave short-term contracts to, that if this committee in 2016 were to extend their contract, remember, your contract ends in 2016 with the Bus Drivers Association, if this committee were to give the Bus Drivers Association three, three more years or five more years, it says to these three people that got shorter than what they had asked for contracts, that they would get the additional years. That's all this does. It's, it's to be fair to everybody now, because in the past, if somebody asked for seven years, they got seven years, even if it went beyond the contract. If somebody asked for five, they got five, even if it went beyond the contract. But this committee wants to look at that contract, so we've been approving all of those individual contracts only going to 2016.
Well, I, you know, you can send it through, you don't have a problem with that, but it just seems to me that, that it flies in the face of the current contract, whether we're following it or not. That's my question.
Isn't this what we talked about the last week?
We have a right to, we have a right to, to, to-
Like, for example, Mr. Mudge, if you wanted, if you wanted to buy a new bus, you'd want seven years, but we're not giving anybody seven years. We're saying you could only have that new bus contract to 2016, giving them three years.
Okay, so that doesn't violate the current contract, is what I'm saying?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, we'll see, that's okay. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion on E?
Motion to approve E?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to say no.
One no. All right, Mrs. Alvinzado, that brings us to F, and you specifically said you wanted to talk about F3.
Just wanted to quickly acknowledge some of the personnel that we have resigning, in particular, Mary Barden, social studies teacher here. I'm sorry to see her go. She's a great teacher, a good mentor for a lot of the students, and she'll be missed. So I just wanted to say that. And so I would offer a motion to approve F.
So moved?
Yes, Mr. Mudge, would you like to comment?
Do you have all of F exempted, or?
I think they did.
Oh, no.
Only F3 was exempted.
There's just F3.
There's just F3.
And so we approved everything else?
Yeah, we did.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to the end of the consent agenda to unfinished business. And the first thing is of the A, the CIP, the tour of Quineset and DMS. This is something I requested of administrations.
Yes, and I spoke to Jim Partridge, who is our architect, and Phil Bergeron, and they would be really happy to give a tour of DMS and Quineset. We were kind of looking at toward the last week in October. They are still wrapping up some work at those schools, particularly the elevator at DMS. Quineset's pretty well done, but those are two schools that we've seen, we did see quite a bit of work for over the summer, and Mr. Partridge and Mr. Bergeron would be very happy to give that tour and to answer questions regarding that work.
More specifically, we are looking at the fourth Tuesday of October, if the committee would, would be able to take that time, I think you all have your Tuesday nights mapped out as it is. So that would be what we were looking at, and that date is October 22nd. All right, if there's no questions, then we are moving on to the parent priority survey.
Yes, this, this is a survey we've talked about a few times already, so I'm not going to go too deeply into it. It's basically looking to our parents to give us a sense of their priorities. We ask just a couple of questions, basically a list of the various things that we talk about on a regular basis in terms of our spending, and ask parents to list it as a low priority or a high priority in their eyes, and then to pick the one that they feel is their highest priority, and to comment on that for us. So we would have some, some pretty good information from parents about, you know, just what they would prioritize, and that can inform our decision-making as we move forward.
Is there any further discussion on the parent priority survey?
What's next?
Mr. Dr. Oge, thank you for bringing that forward. I know that's something that the committee asked for, so I appreciate it. I don't think we need to take any vote, it's just one of those things of, it's-
But my question was, what's next?
And what do we do with it?
Yeah.
This will go out in the next few weeks, and I will report back to you on the results.
How will it be disseminated and made known to the all the parents?
Survey Monkey?
Yeah, we, basically, a survey monkey, you know, online type of survey, use it, utilizing the ListServes, advertising on the webpage, and it asks for parents, one per family, to fill out the survey. I don't know what to, what happens if people decide they want to fill out more than one. I think that's just something you get with, with surveys of this type.
Some of them, they can like block your, you know, they record your, your ISP, what is it, ISP?
ISP.
Your, your computer, your, your in-
ISP number.
Yes.
Not, not, not ISP, that's for ISP numbers.
ISP, was I right, ISP number?
Yeah, I don't know.
And once it's done-
People would be the worst person, first group for that, so if you're using Google, it's really not an issue, all right, if you're getting tracked, I like it or not. You know those little pop-up boxes?
Yes.
It happens to be something you like?
Interesting, yeah.
But it's because they're tracking you on that.
Strangely, yes.
If I have to get the NSA to get all over this, I will. I'm just letting you know.
I think they're already paying attention. I don't know if that's an issue. I think they're already there.
If someone's that desperate to fill out multiple surveys, let them go for it, I guess.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so that brings us to policy. So you have before you tonight the BEAR, the Schedule of School Committee Meetings. This is something we talked about in the Policy Committee, hit our last time in. It was thought of as, this is looking at to make our meetings more efficient, and since we have had a number of meetings where we have ended rather early and that sort of thing, and just how would be best to run the school district. We've, we had talked about the needing some time to have some other things that we, that needs to get done among the committees. Some of the, the subcommittees have talked about finding, having it difficult to find dates. Some of the, we wanted to have a date where we could go around to look at the schools, and so in kind of keeping that in mind, the suggestion was that if we had our meetings the first Tuesday of the month, that we could use the second, the fourth Tuesday of the month to have some of the other things that we still need to do. So this wouldn't be the sort of thing of you'd be having a Tuesday night that would be a meeting less for school committee. It would just be, there would be other things that could be scheduled during that time. You'll see before you that we kept in mind some of the, the issues that school committee members had brought up in past, that we need extra meetings for the budget time, and so the proposal was to keep the extra meetings in the January time period, in the February time period, and also because at the end of the year, we happened to get a lot of requests for funding at that point, a lot of staff issues, and a lot of the summer issues, that again, the proposal was still to have the, the two meetings in the month of June, as those are still needed because of the issues you run into. We would probably still have two meetings in August, because of the number of things that come up before the school committee starts. In December, we only ever have one meeting anyway, so you can look at this as, you can look at this one way as taking, having less meetings, or you could also look at this as it merely gets rid of five meetings. And like I said, and it wouldn't, it would just be the school committee meeting, but it essentially still means that you need to keep those dates open, because there would possibly be other things scheduled, such as, right now, we have, October 8th would be our meeting, but we would have October 27th, and would be, it would not be a meet night off. It would be the second, or the fourth, the fourth meeting Tuesday of October, and at that time, we would be going on the tour together. So that, that's why I say, yes, this is a change, but it's a little bit different structure. It then, it gives the possibility that if we need to add a meeting, we can add a meeting and let the public know. But it was a much more efficient way, we thought, to letting the public know as to what was going on, than to schedule a meeting and then say, oh, we really don't have anything that we need to talk about in canceling meetings, which we did not see as a good alternative when we're dealing with members of the public who may start getting confused when we're canceling meetings. So we thought it's easier to add a meeting if we need it, versus it is much more difficult to cancel meetings and get that word out to people in, in the public. So that was the, the thought, the process that went through this, and now I am looking for discussion, because I know that there has been a lot of discussion of this proposal. Mrs. Clark and then Mr. Biscarton.
So I'm fully in favor of this proposal. First of all, I would say there's nothing wrong with change. It could be a more efficient way for us to use our time, as Ms. Page just outlined all the reasons why, which I support, and I sat in on this policy meeting. Also, we should note that half of the other school districts have one meeting a month. And it's not that we're saying one meeting a month for the remainder of the school year. It only affects, as Ms. Page said, a couple of months, which gives us an opportunity for subcommittee meetings, which are difficult to schedule because of time constraints, for tours of the schools, and it gives us the ability, with the understanding that we as school committee members still keep that fourth Tuesday open in the event that Dr. Oge or Ms. King sees certain issues that may not be accomplished in the first Tuesday meeting, that could then be accomplished in a second meeting that we could call. And I think the perception of having meetings listed and then canceled, it doesn't go over very well, you know, but it is with the understanding that it's not that we're getting an extra Tuesday off, we're going to use that time efficiently for other things that is going to make us, you know, an efficient school committee. I mean, the last three meetings, we've been done at 8:30, you know, we save on having it videotaped, you know, we could have been doing something else with our time on those nights that we ended early. So, you know, I'm, you know, all for this, and I think it's worth a try, because if it doesn't work, we can always go back to what we were doing before.
Mr. Biscarton.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. If, I'm recall, have we, have we canceling a meeting? Have we? Have we ever canceled a?
We have, we have canceled meetings.
Once last year.
We have? Just one? What if, let's say on April, this, the 2014 schedule, April 8th, and then one on April What is, what's involved in convening a meeting in between? Let's say on April 8th, we decide we need, we need to have another meeting. What would be involved for us, from, just logistically, how easy is it for you? What would be involved for us, from, just logistically, how easy is it for you, or whoever it is, I'm assuming it's you and Lorene, to put together an additional meeting between those two, those two meeting days?
So...
I'm just, I'm just wondering how easy, is it easier said than done, or is it easily, as easily done as it is said to schedule another, a meeting, for example, between April 8th and April 29th, as an example?
We need 48 hours. Right, we need 48 hours.
That's all we need?
Yes. I mean, you know, now, that's if we have an emergency meeting, because usually those are meetings that just have one agenda item. If you are going to have your regular meeting, then it's a little bit more involved because we have to get the backup material, like your packets, obviously, because there are, you know, over 100 pages most of the time. It's the sort of thing of getting the backup material, takes a long time for the administration to put together, and so that's why we have never held anything for, or very rarely do we hold anything much more than two weeks, you know, in between, because it is turnaround time.
Well, then, for, well, then, in my scenario, on April 8th, we realize there's a lot more to cover, and we don't have enough time to cover it. That's, that's in my scenario.
I see what you're saying.
So then, at that point, all the material's already been compiled, correct?
Right.
So it would be simply the 48, and that's just, as Ms. Carroll said, then it would just be the 40-hour notice, 48-hour notice would come into play.
That's limited, in my understanding, to emergency topics only.
No, no, they were all changed last year.
Okay.
We don't have to publish in the paper or anything like that. It's just a 48-hour notice on the Secretary of State's...
Does it have to be an emergency?
No.
Of any nature?
No.
Really? So now it's any topic in 48 hours?
Any, any meeting only has to be posted now 48 hours ahead of time. That, as I said, that was changed last year. You're right in thinking that that was only an emergency about a year and a half ago, but the policy changed to make it easier for school committees.
That's good, okay.
When they got rid of us publishing it in the newspaper.
Right, thank you. Sorry, John.
That's okay, no, that's, so, that beeping is about ready to make me go over again. I came to concentrate. So, basically, the, what, what you're saying is that if, other than, if it's an, if it's an emergency, we wouldn't necessarily know that on, in my scenario, on April, on April 8th, and it would just be an emergency to address one item.
If it's an emergency, you can call it an emergency and post it as soon as you know there's an emergency and have a meeting.
And it would just be, and that, but that's limited to just one, just that item.
Whatever the emergency is.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mudge.
What do we do in April?
What did we do in April?
What do we do in April? Isn't that the heart of the budget season? Reviewing the budgets and determining what we're going to do, and getting prepared to rebut this, that, and everything else? After all, the first week of May, this town council approves the school budget, although we sent it to the first of March, okay, but in between March and, and April is, there's a lot of budgetary issues that arise and so forth and so on that I think need to be addressed. So I, I'm not in favor of that whatsoever.
You're not, you're not in favor of this because we would miss the April meetings. But isn't that usually when you go away, Mr. Mudge, that you miss the April meeting?
That's out of order.
That's a material, really.
That's out of order.
Thank you, but you know something? I am always working on the budget. I can work on the budget, Mrs. Page, through the internet, and I can do my work, because I did that this year, and I passed a lot of documentation out, okay? In fact, I study it quite, it's very good to have that time, okay? So to, to suggest that, that, and, and, and single me out is, oh, you're not going to be there anyway, I find it pretty, pretty... political.
As I recall the timeline last year, and I have had some conversations with Mr. Embry about this, for FY14, I, if you recall, last year, we had to have a meeting during the February break, which I know caused some issues for some of our members. It doesn't look like we're going to have to do that this year, so our budget would be due to Mr. Embry by March 3rd, which is the first Monday. It's a little bit later because of the way the calendar falls. But then, I didn't think we got any information back from the town until May, so I, I don't remember doing any cuts or anything else in that timeframe, April, March, and April. We gave it to them, and then Mr. Embry puts together his budget, it goes to the town council, that gets approved, they come back and, and talk to us about our funding, and I thought that happened in early May.
Yeah, we had the what-if scenarios.
Okay, Mr. Cerisi and then Mr. Busgarden.
I'm just going to use tonight as an example. We had an agenda item, for whatever reason, the committee wasn't ready to approve, whether it be funding source, or an advertisement issue, or incorrect information provided, or discrepancy in the information. The committee wasn't ready to vote on it, and we tabled it, and some committee members, including myself, were, had some reservations about, well, we're going to push this off for two weeks. In this calendar scenario, we wouldn't be pushing it off for two weeks, we'd be pushing it off for a month, so. And there are many more pressing or more important agenda items than the one we just tabled that I wouldn't feel comfortable pushing off for a month. We have two regular scheduled meetings a month, and you know that when you sign up to run for school committee. Anything we do is in addition to that, not in place of that. So at this time, I'll offer a motion to keep the current school committee calendar, meeting calendar as it is.
I'll second it.
It is a motion on the table. Mr. Busgarden.
Mr. Mudge brings up an interesting point, and so does Mr. Cerisi. I mean, there, there's different points, but they're, but they're the same, in theory, that if something needs to be discussed, and it's, and it's timed, and the April example, April 8th through the 29th, but can't we then call a, call a meeting to, A, in Mr. Cerisi's scenario, to discuss that particular budget item that we couldn't come to agreement on tonight? Couldn't we have an emergency meeting to do that? And can we have, couldn't we just simply schedule an additional meeting between April 8th and April 29th to address any budgetary issues that come up?
Yes. Yes, we could.
So there, while their examples and concerns are valid, we do have ways to, to address them, correct? All right, please. No, am I right? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and your question was, is it easier to cancel than to add?
No, no, it's Mr. Cerisi. I said, if something, if something like Mr. Mudge brought up were, were to happen, or something that Mr. Cerisi brought up were to happen, we could schedule, for example, the thing this evening, we could schedule an emergency meeting next Tuesday to discuss that particular item, could we not?
It would not be an emergency. It would be a regular scheduled meeting just to discuss that one item. Yes, you can, as long as you post it 48 hours.
Okay, and if, if we were in budget, if we were in the middle of a budget in, on the 2014, in the middle of April, and we need to have a, a meeting to discuss potential cuts, we could, we could schedule that, could we not? That would be considered a regular meeting or an emergency meeting, either one.
Regular meeting, and you have 48 hours to schedule.
Yes. So in those two scenarios, we have ways, we, we can address both those situations?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mudge.
The only statement in this world, if it ain't fixed, it ain't broken, don't fix it.
There is, Mrs. Avanzato?
I think we've, our meetings have been shortening up, which is very good, and I think, of course, I would love to eliminate a meeting, I think we all would. I do have some concerns around this in terms of our agenda getting stacked with too much, or also the ability to address things that come up and have to, we, we need to wait, or we could, we could do what you just said, but I think it's pretty hard to get all of the people at this table to figure out a time, or at least four of us and administration to figure out a time to schedule something. I don't know, I, I like the idea, but at the same time, I have some concerns around the idea, and I'm wondering if we get everything done at our first meeting of the month, what's wrong with canceling the second meeting? What's wrong with that? I think it's okay. I mean, I don't see a, a lot of people at our meetings. They watch the tape, and they'll be aware, as long as there's notice enough to them so that they, you know, show up for, I don't think it's a huge issue. I don't know.
I think this was, we had talked about this as an efficiency issue, just to, to show that we are running the school district very well, and, and taking in that in consideration that, that we didn't need to have the, the two scheduled. That was, what our discussion was in the Policies Committee. But there is a motion on the floor, and there is a second, so if there's no further discussion here, we should call the question. Do you want a roll call? Yes.
Can you just repeat the motion back, please?
The motion was to keep the current calendar as it is, it, by you, Mr. Cerisi, and seconded by Bill Mudge.
Thank you.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
John Busgarden?
You know, I, I, I agree, I understand what Mr. Mudge said, it's not broke, don't fix it. However, this is in a, a go-no-go situation, where if we step over the line, there's no coming back. I'm not going to support the motion, because I think there's enough safeguards in here to, to make sure that things get done in an appropriate manner, and if we try for it and it doesn't work, we can always go back, so I would say no.
Okay, Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin?
No.
Robert Jones?
Yes.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
I'll say no for right now.
Okay, motion passes five to two.
Four to three, it was four to three.
I'm sorry, four to three. All right, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chairman? Do you have correspondence on the agenda?
Yes, we do. You may read that.
Yes.
So, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I want to go through correspondence.
Excuse me?
We have correspondence on here?
Yes, it is to read. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Excuse me, I would like to discuss some correspondence.
You may read the correspondence.
Yes, I will, if you insist.
We're not going to read it out loud. There is a motion on the floor to adjourn.
You're not going to read it out loud.
And do I have a second?
This is, Mrs. Page, what I'm trying to bring to the...
I've had a motion to adjourn.
Well, I'm trying to bring to the school committee's attention is a procedure to, to bring items to, for discussion at the table, okay? Our policy has been violated. I've attempted on several issues to bring three items to the table over the last three weeks, and Mrs. Page has refused to allow me to do that.
What items are those, Mr. Mudge?
That's, there's three items. One has to do with the septic system, one has to do with a tennis court, okay, at the middle school, and the third has to do with, okay...
The roof reports.
Roof reports, yes.
And I have said to you that you can get all these, these items from Mrs. King, that she was able to give you...
I would like to discuss that with our fellow committee members.
I do have...
So you're saying that I can't put these on the agenda? That's what you're telling me, I can't put these on the agenda.
I'm saying they will be on the agenda, but not yet.
Excuse me? I put these on, Mrs. Page, I put, I asked you twice in, by email, okay, three weeks ago, to put them on the agenda. You didn't have the courtesy to respond to me then, and I asked to put them on the agenda again.
I responded to you that you should ask Mrs. King for the reports.
Yes, and you said, you said you didn't like what I was going to say, so you wouldn't put it on the agenda. Quote, let me read what you said.
There's nothing to discuss...
May I read what you said?
In the terms of the tennis courts at Wickham Middle, we are doing just like we always do. We go for an RFP, and...
Excuse me, I'm not asking you to speak for me.
Then we put it on the agenda.
I'm not asking you to speak for me.
But we're merely going through the process.
No, you're not, the problem is, we're not going through the process, and you won't let me illuminate that situation.
We are going through the process that we go for every RFP.
Mr. Page, Mrs. Page, do I have the option of putting something on the agenda, or don't I?
I have given you the answer that you should ask for the reports first, and after you ask for the reports...
No, 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 don't tell me to ask for a report. I have something to report to you.
Is there a motion on the table? There is a motion, but Mr. Cerisi made the motion to adjourn, and he has left, and I have not received a second.
How about the, how about the septic system?
Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Mr. Busgarden, did you say aye or nay?
I, I just said, I said nothing. I...
I abstain.
I don't understand why, why Mr. Mudge can't bring up his correspondence, that's all. I think he's, you know, he's a, one of seven, he has every right to bring up correspondence if he feels it's, that's the thing to do, and...
It is not the correspondence that is on the agenda for right now. He is bringing up email, and I'll be more than happy to discuss him, but it is not the correspondence that is on the agenda that we have here for tonight. So he is bringing up correspondence that is not on the agenda. I'll be more than happy to talk to Mr. Mudge.
No, I want to talk to my school committee members about some contracts, maybe some contract failures, okay? And you're, 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 you're telling me I can't talk to my fellow school committee members and let them decide?
You may talk to them all you want. I am not keeping you from talking to them, but you do not need to discuss them on an agenda. It is not anything that is on an agenda.
But why not? Because we put out a contract...
So you're more than welcome to discuss it with people, just like I discussed my kids and other things.
You had a contract put out that you had expenditures of $10,000 that we didn't need. A contract of $10,000 we didn't need.
Mr. Busgarden.
Is there correspondence for, I mean, this is... Yes, there is, like, for, for two weeks, yeah. Put it on the agenda. No, 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 the, the correspondence, I believe, on our agenda, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
It is when somebody in, within our school district sends us a piece of information. Oh, yeah, I had information... Am I right?
Yes.